I don't recall seeing anybody saying they're remote that you hear from anybody saying they're gonna be remote.
Not remote, no, but just checking email. Ashton's not gonna be here, so you're agreed to chair. And Melissa is running late and is gonna join the meeting hopefully remote after towards the end.
Okay.
And this second, that's.
Others were still expecting, are we expecting that?
Uh, yeah, I haven't heard anyone not attend.
I'm a drop in visitor. Replacing John Weebo.
Okay, thank you.
Were you waiting last minute?
I was.
Maybe we're recording it on, but we can start anytime.
Okay. Six. Let's see, it is seven oh one, so I'm sitting in tonight as chair for, sorry, vice chair sitting with the chair. Uh, it's called meeting order. Planning Commission, September tenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, would someone offer to read these land acknowledgement?
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than ten thousand years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
Thank you. Uh, next approval of the agenda, uh, you all have a hard copy in front of you and received by email, just a very, very slight. Little really administrative changes you'll see in yellow on the sheet in front of you. Um, but these are technically changes from what was distributed to the public. Um, so under the approval of meeting minutes, really, this is a. Change in form, it's just to note that it's approval of meeting minutes from August thirteenth, which was a regular meeting, so just adding some. Uh, text to that and on meeting dates, there are the specific item we want to discuss, which is the discussion on a potential joint meeting with the planning commission and city council. Uh, anyone have any concerns objections to those changes to the agenda? I get a motion to approve the revised agenda, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Those changes are approved, all right, well, that takes us to the approval of meeting minutes from August thirteenth. Um, any? Changes edits corrections that have caught your eye? So Edna Shereed now, okay, good, all right. Then can I get a motion to approve those minutes as ready?
So.
All right. All right, second, where it is. Okay, those are. Meetings, and I think I'm just gonna look to look to you, Mark, on this, so we're gonna discuss the, a potential joint meeting of the commission and council.
Uh, we, we have time at the end of the agenda to talk about issues and items coming before the planning commission over the next year. But we thought we'd move to the front of the agenda, a next step for the comprehensive plan. We discussed it at, uh, city council on the twenty sixth of September, we're hoping to transmit it officially. Um, but be prepared at that point. Or question about what comes next. And make that happen, December is moving. So one of the items that was discussed mutually was the possibility of a joint workshop. Uh, meeting, whatever you wanna call it, over the planning commission and city council can sit together early in the process and convey the effort. On to questions, how to discuss, how did we arrive at this point? In addition to the cover letter that's in the packet. It was discussed broadly enough that we, we think that's the desire. And we know that the funding commission is going through a long series of special meetings. Um, but the city council really likes that partnership. Uh, sometime, uh, possibly not covered.
So the city council's requesting that this. That the commission.
Yeah, not formally as a body.
Yeah, yeah, but just, okay.
And so we're hoping to put that together as we go through September, we wanted to merge it with you tonight, fully knowing that we have other items for your regular meetings. But it's important enough to at least make sure we're all on the same page.
So would the most likely plan be a city council meeting and meeting jointly there or a special meeting for both bodies?
Uh, as it stands right now, I'm thinking a special meeting, possibly on a Saturday, you know, in addition to the, the existing workloads that council and the commission have.
And the other, only other alternative would be a city council work session where we meet in this room. Um, so, but I think that it might not be enough time. And we do have other things on the agenda, so I think if, uh, if the Saturday meeting is difficult, I think we could. Look at extending some of those work session meetings, um, there's one. I don't, I have not, I do not have the, because, you know, we identify agendas out in time and I don't have it for October tenth is one. Of those working sessions, um. And Mark, you may have already looked at the calendar, which I haven't done. To see, uh, if there's space on any of the council work sessions.
Um, there is if, if, uh, if all the items that are anticipated in October stay. And we extend the agenda, start early or start late.
Correct, yeah, usually there, I mean, because when we have regular council meetings, we go as late as it takes, right, so. Yes, the other, uh, the other committee of the whole meeting, which is a working session is on the twenty first. Of October, so those are, I just mentioned those as possibilities, if the evenings are better for people than.
Could we like discuss real quickly? How would Saturday work for all of you? And we're talking about Saturday evening, is that what was talked? Or any time on the Saturday?
Yeah, I'm pitching it out there, my contacts at city council is unavailable any day, anytime, when would you like to meet? So I'm hard pressed to decide.
So the question is to us.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a couple of hours would be good.
Two hours.
A hour and two hours, yeah.
I'm happy to do a set, it just depends on the Saturday.
I'm largely gone that much, but, but I hope maybe the kids.
Are we thinking October or like September or either?
Uh, it would have to be after September twenty sixth.
Okay.
But probably closer to that than. Than November.
So the twenty eighth of September or as Lois said, uh, twenty or twenty, the fifth of October.
The fifth of February would be the fourth of that.
It's both.
Not in mere the years.
Twenty eighth would be too soon for the council to read the document.
Does it sound like the fifth works for most people?
The fifth is a holiday.
Oh, it is, uh, so.
Shereen, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I, I, I can do the twenty eighth. September twenty eighth in the evening, right?
And I'm suggesting logistically, it doesn't make sense because the council will probably not have. I think it was the most productive if the council has had a chance to read.
Hmm.
The, the plan and the record.
So later October is best.
So, uh, I think, uh. Even early October, just something that gives a little bit more time. So.
So should we just look at the various Saturdays real quick and get a, get that figured out and then if we need to do. What was that, the twenty first of Monday, I think you said. That we could.
Yeah.
Potentially do.
Well, I think.
Well, let's do the Saturdays first, so October fifth, do we have issues?
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh, two hours. Twelfth.
Holiday week.
Is it?
Almost there, and we're in.
Was that Monday, it's not up.
And also, y'all could. Three holidays.
Okay. On the week. Go to the nineteenth for a Saturday. I could do during the day, but not the evening. What's the timing usually on the work session on the Saturdays?
We don't usually do Saturday work sessions except when we do strategic retreats, so. That would be flexible.
Okay.
Does anybody have a conflict on the nineteenth? I could do that, eighteen.
I think I'll be out of town.
Sure, how about you?
Yeah, that works for me too.
So Lois, are you, would you be able to call in or are you out?
I'll, I'll be in Vienna.
Two in the morning, we can.
So we're down one right now for October nineteenth is what it sounds like. Okay, um, twenty six is out for me, so now we're starting again in November.
So could I say the two, as an alternative, uh, just for you all to consider if you're gonna do like a default or something? Would be the, um, we have a work session on October tenth at six P M. Uh, which is, uh. Uh, Thursday. Or, uh, I think I said October twenty first. Uh, which is a Monday and that one is, is a good time because. It's just the committee of the whole, so there's no regular council meeting following that, and that's also at six P M. So just to, I just wanted to put those in the mix for you.
So I know Monday on the first I can do.
You can.
I can.
Well, let's talk that one first, twenty first, and it sounds like maybe a better fit.
Yeah, I'm saying it's better than Monday.
Okay.
I cannot do the twenty first.
Okay, we're minus two at least there. Let's go back to the tenth, I'm sorry, Sheri, did you, could you do the twenty first?
Yes, I can do the twenty first, that's a Monday night.
Correct.
Yes.
And what about Thursday, the tenth? Where we at on that one?
Tens, I can do it.
Uh, yes, I can do the tenth.
Yes. Lois?
I'll be back. So between the, uh, the tenth and the twenty third.
That's when you're gone?
Yes.
Okay, so the tenth is not good, okay, so we're missing. Well, we're gonna miss a couple of people no matter what we do, it's what it sounds like.
So I, I leave it to you all what you prefer, because then we'll have to on a Saturday pull the council members too. So, uh, so that's, uh, but, but it's all doable, so let's find the, the best of the resource or something, yeah.
We have two traps and so we'll go back.
Two tracks, yeah, very good, I think.
Maybe we could email and get.
Yeah, let's get some, let's get some clear, yeah, because we don't have everybody here, but it sounds to me like right now, the. The nineteenth, we lose Lois. But so far, that's the only person I've heard we lose on the nineteenth, that's a Saturday, it's time, time is uncertain. And then we've got. And between the tenth and the twenty first, the twenty first sounds better in terms of. It's the committee of the whole.
Yeah.
So maybe we could. Try those two as.
Lois would just have to come back.
City, city's got budget to fly her back right here, right?
Well, I believe.
So, okay.
Okay, we'll start, we could start on that basis and evolve it.
Yeah.
And, and check with.
See what works.
So both, yeah.
And chair who's not here, so we wanna make sure she's available.
And see if we're missing any other conflicts and so forth, thinking about that, but in general, it looks like that. You know, beginning of October to mid-October.
Tenth to the twenty first is our window right now.
Yeah. That would do it.
Okay. And we will send something out to the group and try to get that nailed down as soon as we can, um. All right. Thank you for that, this is public hearings, we don't have any public hearings today. Uh. Public comments, I don't see any, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or anything, and they don't, we don't do that anyway.
Not, uh, for a month.
Right. Okay. Um, so much for public comments today, and we have a, we have a pinch hitter on the council liaison.
Correct, for old times' sake.
Floor is yours.
That council member leave, I was asked you to come back and cover it today, so here I am. Um, I wanted to let you know just about some of the other things that are moving forward in this timeframe, so. Um, I believe that this week we will get the mayor's proposed budget. Um, we must adopt a budget for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six by, um. Uh, I think at the latest, the, like, the first few days of December, so that's going to move very, uh, rapidly and, um. Uh. Traditionally, only a handful of people pay that much attention to it, but I guess I would leave you with the thought that it's a very tight budget. Um, because of, um, inflationary pressures, both in terms of. Um, overhead and supply some things, but also salaries. Uh, you know, we talked a little bit about, uh, the, the salary and employee retention, the, the pay raises that came up post pandemic, so, um. So it's, it's a challenging budget, we also have community partners like Friends of Third Place Commons or Shore Lake Arts who. Haven't received any increase in funding from the city in like eight years or something, so we're trying to, uh, find small pots of money. And then, uh, the other big thing I'll mention is like Stormwater and other Clean Water Act mandates that are coming to us that are very expensive. And we are not, um. Getting, uh, you know, enough, there aren't very many grants coming our way for those, so the, the way we have to pay for those is on utility bills. So that's gonna be an issue, and then on solid, on, on sewage. King County is also coming up with very large increases in sewage treatment costs which are passing on to us. They, they actually start at like six percent and they keep going up in succeeding years, so. Just wanna say, there are some challenging issues, the mayor and city administrator and probably our community development director. Have not been thrilled with it, but we can, you know, we, we're dealing with it, you know, because we have to. So, uh, that's, uh, the situation, so you'll, if you come to a council meeting or the, or a budget committee meeting, you'll probably hear some of these issues, but I just given you like the. Uh, slip notes, uh, for that. Um, and then, uh, you may have heard that we're, uh, we have put a traffic camera. Um, by Brookside on one seventy eighth, and that is going to. Maybe went like this Monday or something, anyway, for a long time, people just got warnings. But it's amazing how many people are still speeding, I drove that way and I noticed cars going slower. So when the flashing lights are, are going, it's twenty, but when the, um. But when the flashing lights aren't going, it's twenty five, but it's camera, uh, recorded, so. We're gonna see how that goes, whatever revenue we get from them has to go under traffic calming sidewalks. Uh, you know, other traffic and, and pedestrian mobility safety kind of issues, so. Uh, that, that is an issue that surprisingly, we have gotten one or two kind of comments from the citizenry, but not very much more. Um, and let's see, there's one other thing, oh, I wanted to mention Sound Transit, so, uh, we did actually, um. Uh, uh, pay to get some, uh, engineering design drawings for the Q Joan concept. Uh, where you would have a bus lane only at the light of one fifty third and one sixty fifth, and then from one sixty fifth north. You would have a bus lane, so you'd have the, the regular, uh, full bus lane from one sixty fifth north. But, uh, because the traffic mostly backs up the traffic lights. You would have like a, a bus lane with advanced traffic signaling. So that's what we've been encouraging, and the mayor and I will probably go. Meet with the deputy C E O who may become the new C E O of Sound Transit and. Uh, see what we can do to advocate that, but, um, you know. Hopefully we'll have some impact, uh, we, this is like our third new executive. Person to be talking with in a very short time, so anyway, um, but, uh, we did get to ride the new Lindwood link, um, with the other, uh. Dignitaries, like hundreds of our friends, it wasn't like small and intimate. And, uh, and it was pretty cool, I have to say, so anyway, that's all, any questions or comments or things, you know, I want to put on our radar?
Would this alternate plan that you're discussing with the deputy C E O lead to less loss of trees and presumably less.
Absolutely, less property taking, less loss of trees, as far as we can tell from their timeline, um. The costs and the timelines seem like they have so many uncertainties in them for the current plan. That we hope at some point our idea gets some traction simply because. I mean, they're, they really, it's like a hundred properties that they have to take some part of. And, uh, you know, more people are starting to say, well, just take my whole property, that's my sense anyway, is what's going on, and we still have the issues at Beshetla Creek. Can they really have a bus lane there, so. So much, they have their own risk analysis and it's very carefully worded, but it seems to flag all of these, not to mention they haven't applied for a single permit. Yeah, so, uh, I, my. I think as time goes on, right now, I'm, I wouldn't be optimistic, but as time goes on, I'd like to think. Optimistically that we have some chance to, it's, it's, um, it accomplishes, I think, ninety percent of their goals. If they would just take a look at it, it's so hard to get the moment to stop them.
Yeah. Has the plan that you're gonna share, has it or will it be shared kind of publicly?
Yeah, it's on the, if you wanna see it, it's on the, um. It's on the Sound Transit section of the, of the, um. Of the website, of the city website, yeah, but, um. Yeah, we haven't really, I guess we haven't really publicized, we sent them a letter saying that was the concept we wanted, then to look at. But we didn't, um. Have the drawing at that time, so that's, that's a good point, I'll try to make sure. That with a little notice on that.
So maybe purpose of this meeting is not necessarily to attain an agreement immediately, right?
No, it's to, um, basically advocate for or introduce this deputy C E O who might become the C E O. To us because we're not well-known, uh, as a community and to try to, um. Uh, you know. I doubt, you know, sometimes people have never even been there.
Hmm.
You know, so to just try to have a, a respectful professional conversation, not a. Sorry, you guys are in the way of the conversation. Anyway, sorry, we don't have to, I can talk to you more about it later, but, uh, it's, um. We were, we were told to wait till after Lindwood Lake opened to try to have a meeting like that, because there's, was so much going on.
Good. Your comment about, uh, like first part is not necessarily known, a well-known place, certain community members, actually has. Is pertinent to our conversation, I think we're gonna have later in this. Is, uh, in, in this meeting today, because I think we're gonna address some of what, what, what we're gonna. Work on for the next few years, so.
Yeah.
The fact that, like, for a part, isn't known, I think we could do something about that.
Yes, um, I agree, and also, um, lately, some of what I hear is, well, you guys are like Mercer Island, and I'm like, why? I mean, I moved here originally because it was a whole lot cheaper. For the Lake Forest Park than in the city of Seattle, and I worked at Noah, uh, so it was great, uh, so it is to, if that is not true anymore. But, um, you know, I do think that, uh, and then the perception is that the tree ordinance, you know. Goes too far, uh, so there, there, even our. First district representatives don't, aren't like. Our old forty-six district representatives are still very friendly to us, but we're still getting. Our new first district representatives to get to know us better, because they have wooden mill bottle, can't worry, we're so different.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Okay, I don't wanna take away.
Thank you.
Getting us.
Very. Report, so we are pivoting to old business, starting with. Our friend, the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update. Final discussion, it's you or Christina who's seeing us up here.
Oh, this is a momentous occasion, quite a milestone, so I'm glad that we took the extra time. I, I thank Christina for her work and the additional comments instead of rushing it in July and August. Um, we have a draft, uh, planning commission recommended document, and so the hope tonight is we go through those three items. Achieve that as a group, uh, and then officially transition to the city council. Um, it's not forced, if there are issues remaining, um, we can address them, but I, I think at this point. Um, we, we have a draft that's capable of going forward, so I would suggest it, um, the. Prior discussion was, what is the mechanism or tool that does it, it's not a resolution, uh, as we would do at city council for adoption. Uh, but the cover letter, uh, through the chair, vice chair was discussed, the draft was circulated, that's, uh, follows the minutes in the packet. So that will be the conveyance or transmittal. In, included with the actual. Document, there's some discussion that, uh, Chris, it might be helpful to Christina as to how the city council would like to see it, but there is a red line strikeout. Version of all the changes and at what point, um, but I think tonight, the, the current working draft is the transmittal. We can achieve that in September, uh, and. Based on your discussion tonight, so if any remaining issues or questions. Christina, did you wanna, I know you don't have a formal presentation type, but you wanna add a little bit?
I do, um, so what you, what you received tonight includes all of the most recent. Round of comments from planning commissioners, um, where things seemed to be a departure from. What had been discussed or what we recommended, we included those comments, uh, for discussion tonight. My hope is that we can go through all of those comments, uh, finalize the language that will be recommended and. Vote on a motion to recommend this version of the document. Um, that said, there are some ongoing work items that we will be resolving once this document does get handed off to city council, um, so as, um. As we've gone through this plan, I've been, uh, communicating with you that we've got occasional data gaps, those are getting fewer and fewer, but we just, for example, got some additional information from one of the utility districts for the capital facilities and utilities information. Um, so that will get updated in the next version of the document, um, there are still a few Q A Q C issues, we're still double checking links and making sure all of those are updated. Uh, about an hour after I sent the last version, I realized that, uh, for example, um, Iana, you had. Pointed out a broken link and I hadn't gotten around to fixing that yet, so, um, anyways, there, there are a few other things like that, uh, and then finally. Um, the marketing team will be coming up to Lake Forest Park, I think later this month to take some pictures to refresh the graphic elements of the comp plan. If you have a place that you want photographed besides like city hall, the parks and local one oh four, please let me know. Send me an email, uh, with those locations listed, we will make sure that we get some marketing photos of your favorite places in Lake Forest Park and we will put them in the document. Um, and then finally, uh, I do wanna let you know, we need to get this to a recommendation tonight, my last day at S C J is this Friday. Um, I am working with S C J Alliance and OTAC, uh, we're returning to OTAC. Um, to see what we can do in terms of continuity and I hope to continue working with you for the duration of this project. Um, but just a heads up that, um, there may be some irregularities in staffing, um. Hopefully not, but that's, uh, that's the goal, so let's get to a recommendation tonight, have a nice clean handoff to city council.
Okay, that's our goal.
Yes.
And we wanna run it.
Uh, we have three suggestions, one is a final discussion, if you would like, uh, any additional elements or. Uh, cleanup or anything like that, if you're past that. And, and as a group, your consensus is reflected in this document, um, you would suggest a formal motion recommending this current working draft. Um, if that takes place, then we could have a finishing discussion among the covered letter. Be simple order like that, or. Any issues that are lingering that you would like to talk about.
So, so that's one option or that was several options?
Three in a row.
Three in a row, okay.
Done discussing this, this recommended draft, this is. Just discussing this, this recommended draft, this is the recommended draft. Uh, um, the, uh, correct. Way to move forward is a motion and a vote. Um, we would hope that it's unanimous when we're at that point. If you're ready to go, that would be the next step. But obviously just don't make it, so if you do this is. After you wanna come back for it. Once that motion's made, then we shift to, are we gonna transmit it? And that's the cover letter. And if, if that's fine, then we'll, we'll go with it as drafted on the twenty-sixth of September, or we could wordsmith it further tonight.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. So I, I, I do wanna point out, there are, so there are those comments in the document that are for discussion. Um, I think you could. I think you could give direction on those before the motion. Or you could have the motion in the second and then. Um, make any adjustments through subsequent motions, uh, based on discussions of those comments.
I, I'd opt for just discussing them first before we get to the motion. If the, if people are okay with that, I'm not. And I was scrolling through, I'm not seeing exactly where they are. Someone needs some help finding the, the four new ones.
Okay.
Council member and just say, to the extent there are issues that there wasn't completely unanimity on, we like to know that. So don't feel compelled to, um. You know, reach a firm agreement if there are different views. We, whether you do that in the cover letter or, or whatever. Um, we, that is something we, we always appreciate hearing. So, um. Just wanted to flag that. I don't, I haven't looked at the details, so I'm not at all familiar with it, but I just don't. Want people to feel like everything has to be tied up with a bow when it goes to council.
Thank, no, thanks for that note. And we have highlighted something in our cover letter that we're. That we kind of struggled to come to exact full unanimity on. Um, and we're gonna ask the council to essentially. Deal with that.
That is absolutely fine. And that has happened in the past. That's not unusual.
So, can you help us get to the?
Yes. Um, there are, uh, there, there certainly, there are more than four. Um, there are, there are several comments, um. That I'll just go through them one by one. You'll see, I, I think, um, the, the issues are, they're. I think they're, they're fairly thematically similar overall. Um, so I'm hoping that it will be relatively quick, uh, to go through these, but we'll, we'll just go through all of them. So the first one, um, is in table, uh, one dash one, which is on enumerated page four. Of the document and, um, this looks at the, uh. The description of the land use element and Commissioner Larson had asked if. We should be changing the description of this element, uh, to pivot away from growth, uh, to look at projected regional needs instead. Um, which is maybe a bit of a semantic, um, choice, uh, but I felt that it was different enough. From the discussion that we've had that I'd love, uh, your, uh, preference to be recorded here.
So the. Sorry, so the comment, and I, I don't have the trackers in front of me, realizing I have a, I have the packet version.
Oh geez, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you can zoom in just a little bit. So this is changing the word growth to.
To regional needs or some, something of a similar flavor.
Okay.
I thought the, I thought like the mandate from the Growth Management Act and, and the county was. Quite simply, you know, to meet projected. Growth needs, right? Isn't that the terminology they use? As, as a region, but then it's divided up most of thirty-nine cities. And so the local. Uh, target for housing and jobs is being backed by this policy.
Yeah, I, I do think that there's freedom to use either term depending on what. Uh, you know, what, what is preferred at the local level. Uh, I think it gets at the same, the same thing. Um, my preference is to keep, uh, with the term growth versus changing to regional needs, just because that is. A term that we've used pretty consistently throughout the document. And I do think that it responds directly to other policy directives. Um, but happy to change it if that's the, the will of the commission.
So process question here. So, so that we can get through these comments. Right? Rather than spending a lot of time on this, I think, I, I like what Christine is doing. She's explaining, you know, what the comment means and why, and your perspective on this. I think we should vote quickly on it, right? And, and at this point, I think we could vote on this.
I, I, I like the term growth. I think that that's very straightforward and that covers a lot of stuff.
So I move to disregard the comment and keep the term growth. Second question.
Okay, we're staying with growth. Thank you. Next one.
All right. Next is. We're in the land use goals now. My computer might have just taken a sabbatical. Hold on. It's a very large document. Um, okay, here we go. Uh, so, uh. A comment from Commissioner Labonte. Um, this is about equity language. Um, so we have, uh, continuously recommended, uh, equity focused language that draws directly from. Growth Management Act, Pigeon Sound Regional Council's Vision Twenty Fifty and in King County, countywide planning policies. Um, this is a request to reconsider how this particular policy is phrased. Uh, to, to, um. Remove some of the language about racial and ethnic minorities. Uh, and other specifically called out populations. We recommend keeping the policy language as is.
Would you like to speak to your, 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 your comment?
You know.
I think we understand that we've talked about it.
Right. Yeah.
So. So I was saying, for the council member, this is the topic where we have some text in our, our letter, uh, around. How we throughout the document, address some of the equity language. And that's where we've struggled a bit to come to. To full consensus. So my, my, my recommendation would be to. Leave it and let council deal with that because we've called it out very clearly and. And I, I mean, no, I mean, no disrespect to the suggestion, but I feel like let's not wrestle. This language anymore since we've already kind of agreed to push it to council to say. We're, we struggled a bit, please fix it, you know, the council. That. Is that acceptable? Does that sound?
Yeah. And I wonder, are we able to transmit it with the comment in it? So we know exactly where it is? Yeah, the, the packet version doesn't have these comments and track changes, but the transmittal can leave these. As we go through these, the decision, um. Uh, modify as you need as to the consensus. But leave the comment and the detail in there so it can be read later.
I think we could, we could also offer an annotated version where we put the comment into the body, uh, just so that it doesn't get lost in the event that it's transmitted in a different format.
Could I suggest that the name of the planning commissioner be deleted for privacy reasons? If you do.
I mean, I've, I've made it public to the world. So I mean, I stand by.
It's the discussion to leave it out.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes. So you, that's fine.
Then it's not associated with personalities or any individual.
We could pseudonymize, say commissioner as.
So all comments should be. Made anonymous or whatever we leave in the package should be made anonymous.
Yes, yes. The, the idea of being sharing the discussion as opposed to names.
Got it.
Are you comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean. That is what it is. Yes.
But I, I would like to make clear that it, that there was some opposition. I, I just said very strongly that it should be in there. Yeah, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, and I, and I think we've, and I hope everybody's seen it. I think we tried to capture that in the, in the transmitter letter, uh, to say that this is a place where we struggled. So. Um, so it sounds like we're leaning towards leave the language, but save the, save the comments. For the benefit of the council.
So the way we'll take this that. The main document without the comment is the majority view, but there were these additional comments which. Needed the planning commissioners wanted to have pass them to us. So I think that, that works fine.
So do we wanna vote on this? Okay.
Pass them up.
I move to keep the language as is and to transmit the comment in a pseudonymized format.
Yes.
My second.
I'll tell you.
I.
I.
Just to check before we get too far, Christina, if we go with the format where that annotated comment is in there, does that mess your formatting up at all?
Yes, slightly. Uh, it's workable.
Okay, if it's workable, I'll trust you.
Yeah, there may be, uh, temporarily a few extra page breaks, blank pages, um, just to preserve kind of how the sections are set up. Um, so know that as those comments get resolved and, and those annotation boxes get deleted out. That things will look more normal, uh, in future versions.
You could just highlight them and then have like a one cheat sheet.
Oh, that's a, yeah, that's a great idea.
And that doesn't mess up the formatting. So just a suggestion, that's not hard for us as council members to go back and.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, then let's head to the next comment. Um, there was a question about whether scenic vistas have been designated. That's actually, that's a, a staff question. Um, I haven't had a chance to research that and, uh, nobody else has been able to find it. Um, so that, that's a note for me. Ignore that for the time being. Um. Uh, a comment again about, um, policy language here. This is a recommendation from Commissioner Larson that, uh, focuses. Uh, or asks for a revision to say, study the feasibility of expanding commercial or mixed use zoning. Um, I think while this could be phrased either way, uh, feasibility study might be a reasonable implementation action driven from this policy as written. And that would be my recommendation.
Can you say the recommendation one more time? Just.
Keep the policy as written and add a feasibility study for this expanded commercial as an implementation action.
I don't have any, I, I like that recommendation. And I think we heard from both. Within this group, but also from community, a lot of interest in supporting some expansion. But that I think naturally will probably start with a feasibility study and investigations of what the opportunities are, what the constraints are. So I would, my thought would be to take Christina's suggestion here and. Leave it, but add a, add a implementation action that kind of says, start by looking at the feasibility. How does that sound?
Yeah, I like that.
What's the change that you're recommending?
Uh, no, well, no change. Leave the language as it is, but add in the implementation actions. A, a, something that addresses this specifically around start, starting with feasibility analysis or whatever the right words are. To basically start work on that policy. Uh, so I don't think we have a. We don't need to prove a change to the language. We're not changing it, but we're, we could use a motion to support the idea of a. A new implementation action that gets that. Land use policy five point one through feasibility study. That's sound.
Or sub area study or.
Something.
It's near areas.
And that's also kind of what we're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
I would second that, um, that, that we include an implementation act, but maybe, you know, next summer year, we want the feasibility, the various studies. The impact statement, something.
Yeah, I wouldn't automatically go to any, yes, I would just say start with, you know, start, start looking at that because we're hearing that interest. Okay, I, I didn't actually make a motion. I'm not sure I should make a motion as, as acting chair, so from somebody else, you need to add that feasibility actions.
Well, you made a second, so you want to look at.
So, yeah, I'll move to add an implementation, uh, action to look at some sort of feasibility or some area study. Of expanding the commercial zone. Uh, within the city specifically along SR five. One oh four.
Do you want to be specific? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Or we could just say to support policy five point one, right? I mean, that's what we're trying to. That's what we're trying to say, uh, and not change the definition per se, to say, that's what we're trying to get at. Does that make sense? Cause it says, yeah.
Then we could take our, our, our while since, but I did, uh, absolutely, uh, I've moved to. I moved to add some sort of implementation, uh, policy supporting. Uh, looking at SR, um, excuse me, I'm looking at policy five point one. I'm trying to give those general thoughts.
Sorry, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
All right, okay. That's unanimous. Let's keep going.
Hi. See, here's a great suggestion for a photo location. Don't forget, everyone.
I, I just feel like the, the L F B Bar and Grill has been in these documents for so long, let's refresh.
Yeah, um, uh, and we certainly intend to and, uh, um, just a, a great example of a recommendation here. Um, so here is a place where, um. There was, uh. Some concern about, um, how, sorry, seven point. Five and seven point six. I'm sorry, they're on different pages. Um, uh, kind of the, the repetition that may be present in these. Um, seven point five and seven point six, uh, and to perhaps clarify, we've made some changes to the language. Um, but there is a suggestion that we consider, uh, maybe. Consolidating or striking seven point six entirely. For, for clarification and the intention behind policy LU seven point five is to address where development can specifically occur. Uh, within, in the city from a land use perspective, whereas, uh, LU seven point six addresses, um, more of the very specific uses. Um, they accomplish very similar, um, goals to improve access for healthful foods. Uh, but, but one is focused on general land use policy and one is, um. More, more focused on the city's role in, uh, partnering with certain kinds of, um, of uses, like a farmer's market or food trucks. Uh, so we, we see them as distinct policies, uh, that, that move us towards the goal. Uh, but also are happy to combine them at the commission's preference.
Yeah, I, it sounded, it feels me. I just feel like I remember from our discussion, I wanted to kind of consolidate some of these policies so it wasn't so lengthy, but. I, I understand differently.
Yeah, I, I could see leaving them, even though I, I, I mean, I could easily wordsmith that into one goal, but the. But the implementation actions are gonna be different to get out the land use piece versus. Specific activities. So let's just, I think we could leave them.
I propose we do that. It's your second.
My second.
All fair.
I.
Okay.
Emeritus, not to.
I, I sided with Meredith.
Sorry. So it was to leave as is, was that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, all right, uh, looking at policy LU ten, um, a suggestion to strike the phrase people who self identify. Um, thinking, uh, I, I think that this is contributing to some, some problematic language. Um, our equity review is not, um. It, it sees a lot of value in including this kind of terminology, especially, especially since. Uh, racial and ethnic identities have changed over time, even just on a, like a regulatory administrative side of things. Like the way that a US census, for example, designates. Um, races and ethnicities, uh, and self identification also is broader, um. To, to be more inclusive of people with mixed racial or ethnic backgrounds. Um, so we're, we're recommending to leave the language as is.
Well, you're strongly recommending. What it says.
We, yes, we very strongly recommend keeping the language as presented. Yeah, we had, sorry, we had several people working on this. So this is kind of a, a summary of all of. Yeah, we had, sorry, we had several people working on this, so this is kind of a a summary of all of our contributions, yes.
Are you comfortable kind of relying on what we're doing with the previous comment, which is to say, we're highlighting this topic for council?
That, well, I'm 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 still gonna say that I'd like to strike it, I think that it is. If not consistent with the rest of the document, you don't talk about self identification, so.
It's a hard one, because I know it's generational thing as well. And I know that my sons would probably say, keep the language. I could probably side with you.
I I I wanna keep the language, um. No, I I I know that um. It's it's a hard, hard thing to say that upfront, but it it's the truth.
I think we need to vote.
Do we have a motion, one way or the other, uh someone want to make a motion to either uh make the change requested by. Uh commissioner or to leave it as is?
I move to make a motion to keep it as is.
Second.
Good, second. Uh any further discussions? Okay, all in favor?
I.
All opposed? One opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all. Sorry, I was not jumping correctly to the next.
For second.
I'm sorry, I still think we should flag that for the council.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that, yes, of course, you're right. Let me adjust that before I. Okay. Alright, here is, oh, this is another research note for us. Alright, uh this is. Policy EQ five point two, uh which is a, uh the suggestion here is to strike reduce energy demand. Uh leaving the policy as supporting energy management technology and encouraging greater reliance on sustainable energy sources. We are recommending keeping the statement because it is directly tied into. PSRC's requirements in their multi-county planning policies.
I thought that was very strong for the city to come out, I would for something like encourage or something, but that's just like.
Yeah, something, something um. Like encouraging a reduced um energy demand or or something to that effect could be a a great compromise.
I would uh pose that we state encourage reducing energy demand, if you state, Christina.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for encourage. I don't know, you you can do the words reduction or reducing, reduction in or reducing, I don't know. Either. Yeah, that's fine, or I think that's fine.
Does that encourage reduced energy demand, does that land well for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept that change?
So move?
Back in all favor?
I.
Alright.
Uh goal EQ eight, which is related to forest canopy. Commissioner Larson asked us to consider expanding. This policy to recognize the forest canopy as a regional resource. Um I think that's maybe a little bit beyond the scope of a local comprehensive plan, but I also don't think it's problematic.
I would just say that's kind of the council's perspective, that our tree canopy provides a regional benefit. And that's it's part of our contribution to climate change. Uh and management of climate change is our tree canopy, so it's kind of a unanimous view. So in that sense, I just wanted to flag that the council has discussed this concept uh over a times.
And I know the tree board has and.
Yeah. It's consistent, and when you look at a regional heat map, benefit can be shown.
Yeah.
Like Forest Park is not red.
Yeah, and we have that uh uh that modeling report that shows. How much carbon reduction and uh carbon storage our tree canopy provides for the region. So we actually have documentation back it up.
So I move to change city to regional, second.
That's a question, um for Christina, perhaps, and I'm not objecting to the the idea at all, but. Can, I mean, it it just seems a little odd for us to just state as if the region agrees with us that this is a regional resource. Well, perhaps, I don't disagree, but I mean.
Well, perhaps we need to make the case for it, okay? Right, that's, that will be part of our job.
Got it.
But I think it's okay to declare that it is.
That's why I said the modeling that we have to support that is.
Okay.
And it's a federal government model, it is, it's like a state of the art.
Okay.
Could it be something like the officially recognized the city's forest canopy as a key regional resource? So that it really.
I like that a lot, so that's a new proposal.
I propose that it reads our our officially recognized the city's forest canopy as a key.
I second that.
That's what we meant.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second for officially recognize the city's forest canopy as a key regional resource. Uh that's the motion, uh for a second, um. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, uh now we are on to goal EQ ten. Um this, uh it's our EQ ten and eleven, the suggestion is to combine and condense these. We have done some work uh to that end. We, let's see. I guess we we just wanted to flag this as an area of major changes uh from the prior version. Uh but overall, I think the. The messaging and kind of the the implementation actions that would tear off from these are are the same.
And ju- just a note, uh the packet version has the graphic over ten point three and ten point four, and that will be.
Oh, gosh, okay.
That will rely on your screen and your comments, um uh now.
Maybe I didn't see, maybe I saw an old version, because it looks like. So there are only four points? To this this one?
Yes, so EQ ten and eleven were combined and now have uh four, there's one goal with four policies beneath.
Okay, so maybe I was looking at an old version, it looks like you have them basically brought it down to four points.
Yeah, yeah, we've um we've fallen uh, I think, pretty close to what you have suggested.
Christina, what's happening there between ten point two and ten point three, that straight line, what? Yeah, what's?
Oh, um this, I think is, let me. Will I ruin everything if I turn this to full markup?
It's gonna scroll you to another page.
Right, I'm gonna wind up in like in a totally different document, um. I think this.
It looks like maybe that's meant to be in ten point three, but ten point.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this was just a leftover from when things were being rearranged. And I will.
We strike that, ten point one through ten point four each read. On their own.
Yeah, I'll, I'm just gonna delete that as kind of a Scrivener's error.
Okay.
Okay. So is everybody generally happy with what this looks like now? Yes.
I'm trying to understand the comment, though, the use of circular economy and goal covers waste prevention vision. Was.
Uh this, because um I think there were uh or this, this concept was described. Uh multiple ways between the the different goals and their subpolicies in the prior version. Um that we're now uh trying to clarify exactly what the purpose of that was.
Okay. So. Cradle to, I I I see it, okay.
So. Should we have a motion that basically that's about? We. The combination of EQ ten and eleven has recommended here is what we wanna see, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what the motion is here.
Maybe we could just move on, because I don't know if I was looking at a different version, or if you made changes to it, but it looks like it's been. Condensed, so maybe I was looking at an old version.
We we condensed it based on your comments. But it's just, it's just a very big change, because we've now eliminated a goal and condensed all of the policies. Um so we wanted to make sure that it was brought to everyone's attention, that that this was a pretty significant change from the prior version. Yeah, so when you provided comments, it looked very different.
Well, I do remember that this was a section that we said needed to be condensed, but um.
Okay, so are we? Can I get a motion to approve the elimination of goal EQ eleven and the and the new EQ ten? As kind of capturing both of those previous versions, so I think that's what we're looking at.
So here's my only concern about taking reduced landfill material versus reduce waste and making recycling. And composting more accessible and efficient, we know that composting is efficient. It can be, uh but more and more research is showing that recycling isn't doing much in the world. And so I I think whatever efforts that we can do to reduce the amount of waste that is going into landfill is a good thing. But that might be still be that there's still. You know, I I think that it's probably more powerful to, Christina, you could tell me otherwise, but um. We we need to reduce the amount of plastic that we're using. So that it doesn't go into landfill, or so that it doesn't have to be recycled. Cause it's not being recycled.
But doesn't. Cover that, does it's encouraging zero waste.
Okay, you're right, right, thank you, it's a good point, yeah. No, I think you're right. Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
So let me. I get a motion to approve the rewrite of goals EQ ten and eleven to one goalie EQ ten.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay.
A general, a general comment that uh there have been some pretty big changes to the housing element. Um and that maybe reversion to higher policy language might be indicated in some areas. So we'll go through these now, um. Recommend.
You might, I don't remember us ever going through a red line of the housing element and going through it as a group, did I? Was I, did I miss that meeting, or did we ever have a time when housing came back to us redlined? And then we went through it as a group.
It may have looked a little bit different, because Leland uh led that portion of the discussion, so David, um I think presented. That uh or maybe David and Andrew uh at various points in our discussion ands.
I just never, I guess I never remember getting kind of the policies as it was going to be, and then us as a. Uh a group being able to respond to the new way that it was.
I feel like we did, but now I'm, you know, you got me thinking about.
Yeah, you had me second guessing now, and if we didn't, what would be your concern at this point?
Well, just because then we weren't able as a group to look through the housing portion of it, and then have a discuss, you know, kind of do the bouncing off of. Back and forth like we did on all the other topics.
I'm pretty sure we had a meeting on it, but.
We had two housing specific meetings, and I think what Christina's referring to is the questions and the consensus came from the Leland memo. They're targeted questions and then captured into this one.
So we never had a meeting where we got the red line draft of housing, and then we were able to. Comment on that as a group.
I would say it's means tested, but it wasn't, you know, format that resembled.
Yeah, I, we've overall, we've spent the most amount of time talking about housing since we had. Two or three meetings last year, and then I think two different meetings this year discussing housing. There are a lot of changes uh from all of the recent legislature, so it does look very different. Um I I will need to go back through my notes to see exactly what Leland presented and when, though.
Could I say, if you wanted to note that you, the the concepts and the content is supported. Recommended by the commission, but the precise wording was not able to be reviewed. That's a, that's a useful comment for us as council members, so I realize we're at this late stage, and I completely get what the exchange here is saying. But there's a a bridging way to deal with that and to just say, you know, the concept here, what's recommended, the precise wording. Wasn't, you know, gone through line by line, kind of.
Okay, I appreciate.
So it's a way to allow you to move forward. And it's fine for the council to get that, again, it's our job to go through line by line, so.
Everyone comfortable with that, converge, okay?
So that, I mean, kind of the.
Okay. Um then, looking at some of the specific comments here, there's a suggestion to revise the highlighted statement here. To say instead, Lake Forest Park's housing element ensures that zoning for the city prepares for and can accommodate. Expected growth in the city, uh and then continues on with the the remainder of the sentence.
Pardon me, Christina, all of the things that I mentioned for the housing were kind of what I would have brought to the table if we had had a. Whole topic for this whole set, so we can just, if we're gonna do that, that we, you know, didn't. That um what Councilwoman Cody was saying, then we can just pass on the, on all the housing things, and that would have. And what I would have wanted to, you know, talk back and forth this year.
And you can just put those in the agenda if you would like, um as one.
Okay.
Suggestion, so.
Okay, then we will pass by these um housing comments. Um, we can note to add a definition. Uh alright, then we are on to economic development, uh we have. So we've gone uh back and forth on this term, green resource, um this is a term that was introduced, I forget by. Uh which commissioner, but some someone in the planning commission uh kind of coined this term during our process. And it hasn't been well defined, uh and now we've um. Swapped out the term green resource for green landscape, thinking that that maybe captures all of the things that fell under the concept of green resources. Which were things like the urban forest canopy, um open spaces, parks, all of the places where you can access nature, either physically or visually. which were things like the urban forest canopy, um, open spaces, parks, all of the places where you can access nature, either physically or visually. Um, but uh, if that, I guess I'm looking for some feedback on that term or Commissioner Larson suggested maybe swapping for green infrastructure. Uh, although that kind of has its own uh, stormwater based definition. Uh, so I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I could recommend that one. Um, but how's, how's the term green landscape? Or do we prefer green resource and then adding that to the glossary?
I've heard um, they find us the ecosystems.
As ecosystems?
Landscape, when I, when I think of landscape, I think of little trumps and the, the green grass and that. But I don't think I, I don't need to spend a lot of time.
I mean, are we talking about open space assets basically? Is that what that's supposed to capture?
Uh, I, I think it's, it's open space assets, but also a little bit broader than that to include things like the, the, like the forest canopy. And uh, I think kind of the, the natural setting, like the, the way that the landforms uh, kind of define the city, just slightly broader than just the, the open space stuff.
You know, I've heard the, the term natural assets used that captures that broader suite. Um.
I like that too. Natural assets.
I personally like labeling it the tree canopy, labeling it what it is, because it relates back to the forest resource mentioned earlier. But just to have consistency that, I mean, really what we're talking about is the forest resource.
I think it's broader than that too.
Do you really? I, I know, I, I think that's, I think that's a key resource that we're talking about. And it should, I mean, just name it what it is. Anyway, but I think we might be getting into words when I think here first.
Right. And I don't think this is a policy. This is just the intro to the section. So I'm not sure it makes sense for us to spend any more time.
You can just flag it and say, is this the right word? I'm trying to help you.
Yeah.
Done for city council discussion.
Council member Bodie will come up if you're right.
Council member Bodie to introduce. Um. All right, uh, policy eighty four point seven. Um, this is a suggestion to add some implementation action specifically for this. Maybe that's a discussion better saved for our implementation strategy.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna make the executive decision that that's better saved for implementation strategy discussion. We still have a lot of stuff to go through and it's eight twelve PM. So. Okay, uh, policy. So we're into community services and public safety element. Uh, this is policy CS two point five. And a recommendation uh, to, or a, a request to strike the policy. Uh, this originally had the term de-escalation training. Which was uh, our, our recommendation as a, a helpful tool in improving interactions between police and people within the city. Um, we have revised the policy language to, to broaden it a little bit and kind of promote trainings in general for any public servants in order to support safe and positive interactions with community members. Um. We might consider some, some implementation actions that are uh, that directly call out certain kinds of training, either um, conflict, conflict resolution or de-escalation, or, or any other kind of tool that can help broaden the toolbox.
We already do this. And we were leaders in the behavioral health crisis intervention with social workers. And every single member of our police force gets a very intense uh, training of, of, of this sort, but at multiple levels. So the uh, we implement it. So if you want to put it in, fine. I just want you to know that our police force is exemplary in, in this area. And the rest of our staff, small as it is, gets similar training.
Well, and, and not, not meaning to contradict, but we've heard around this table about some personal experiences of negative interactions with law enforcement in the civic.
That's good.
So.
Okay.
So I wouldn't want to strike it.
Let's keep it, keep it for short.
Well, the.
But bring those to the attention of the chief police. Uh, I encourage you to, because it's not um, our philosophy. And in fact, one officer who did some things was let go. So.
If I remember how the conversation went, we agreed to keep the de-escalation training, but we also agreed to keep the um, the three point seven, which was um, facilitate opportunities for positive interaction between youth and police and other public authorities. I think, uh, so that policy was taken out of the final document, which I would really like added back in. Because if we're going to have the escalation training, which I remember as a group, we decided to keep in. I also wanted to have something positive about law enforcement and not only have it be negative. And so I feel like I, if I remember correctly, the way that the group decided when we talked about this is that we would have both of those stay. So de-escalation training, but we will also keep the three point seven, which was the um, facilitate opportunities for positive interactions.
And in fact, there are a lot of those every year. You may not be as aware of them. I wasn't when my kids were young. I didn't pay any attention. But there's, you know, safety shop with the cop, uh, you know, a bunch of other uh, community things, national night out, the officers know to every single national night out location. So I think the department's pretty proud of that. So a positive part of the interaction. So.
So it's three point seven back in.
Yeah, we did, we did add that back in. Um, we did make some changes to this section based on uh, the, the police chief's review and comments. Um, so that, that may have been taken out um, or, or revised based on, on those comments. Uh, but it's, it's back in now.
So, okay, pause, keep your screen right there. So the word positive is not in three point seven. Any objection? If it was for positive civic involvement or something, does that get at your?
Right. Yeah, that's right. So.
Cause I, I, I'm remembering it kind of like you did. I think we were gonna keep, wanted to emphasize both. So we'll put the positive in there. Okay, great. Um, and then let's go back up to the other one. And if we want to specifically add the escalation.
I say not, because it's like you said, you do that anyway, but this at least is promoting training.
That's up to you. Yes. I mean, it occurs. So whatever you want, you, you want it in, you want it out. I don't.
My proposal is that we stay, say the as is.
I don't think we need to put de-escalation in it, but I'd like to focus on the police instead of public servants here. If we're not gonna put de-escalation in. I feel that's just a policy that resonates well with our community and glad that we already do it. It's needed. It's needed on an ongoing basis.
What do you think about this police and other, or specifically police?
I I think specifically, I don't think I don't think there's a recognized community concern that Mark or Deputy Mayor Bodie are not having positive interactions with the community. That's not a thing in our community. That's not a thing in other communities. I think it needs to focus on police.
I kind of like having police and other public servants because it, it kind of ties uh, the notion that, that they, that that's essentially what they are as well as our tax paid public servants. That's for me.
We also have our.
So that's fair. I'm fine.
We also have our court system. And that whole court system, this, that's an important element. It isn't just the police department. The court system, I think this is an important concept where, again, that's invisible to a lot of us, um.
There's lots of resources that are behind the police.
Yeah. And in fact, that's a big area of increasing costs um, in the future.
I'm fine with police and other.
But I, but I do, to your point, I do like separating it out just to highlight it just a little bit, but including it for public service and sinewy sector. These are all public services.
Can I get a motion on two point five as it's now written?
I move to approve it as ready.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna post. Okay, that's good. Then let's go to three, seven and say, can I get a motion on three point seven? So you added the word positive. Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Um, goal CS eight, uh, request to strike this. Um, we do, we do recommend keeping it. It does align with Lake Forest Park's commitment to community building and also with some of the work the, the climate action committee put into the climate action plan. Um, I think that it does set up for some of the future climate element work, uh, but certainly it's not a requirement for the current um, update.
Yeah, I was just wondering if this was in padded eight. I wasn't quite sure what the first one meant. And then the second one, I just suggested that that might be better going to the environmental quality parks section. But if you're setting up a future. No. Adding to it eventually.
I propose we keep it, keep it as is, as Christine has recommended.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, capital facilities, a question on policy CF one point seven. Uh, this, this is a policy that asks for investigation of ways to improve broadband services. Um, there's, there is adequate broadband and there's fiber available in Lake Forest Park. A public broadband service um, does help alleviate some of the cost issues. Um, but also since kind of the part of the intent of this policy has already been achieved, uh, we could consider striking it. Um, but I just wanted to, to bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, I, I raised that comment because I was not thinking about it in terms of cost. I was just thinking about it in terms of the infrastructure. So that's where my comment came from. I, I'm fine leaving it as it is, but I was just asking, do we really have pockets where we don't have that? But I see there's also the economic element. Okay.
Yeah, it could, it could potentially be revised to um, maybe expand access to high speed broadband or something like that.
So anyone else have a strong feeling? I would just, I would just leave it. I just wrote my question because I was maybe a little bit unclear on.
Yeah, sweeping as.
Let's leave it, strike a comment. Thank you.
All right, uh, parks, um, parks and trails element. Um, let's see, uh, this, uh, this goal PT two, uh, the policies, most of the policies in this section were um, relocated to the implementation strategy, uh, because they are more action oriented. So there's only one policy beneath this goal now. Um, we could consider expanding this a little bit, or we could uh, look at some ways to consolidate this, or we can leave this for city council to work on a little bit further.
City council.
Great.
Get this topic more broadly. Um, we're kind of calling it a, almost a transportation action plan with this element in it of mobility. But uh, but we also, there's a strong parks and trails connection too. So I think it's fine. You can flag it for us. And I'm sure we will have volunteers on the council who will want to mess with this.
Uh, all right, then moving on to PT seven, there's a suggestion to revise the goal language to state, develop and expand public access to art and cultural heritage through the utilization of public spaces. Um, I think, I think that would be fine. Um, we would lose this, uh, this term inclusive representation. Um, but I think that, that is also uh, supported generally by policies within um, this element. So uh, would leave it up to the planning commission's preferred direction on this one.
I guess I would ask if this should be another place that's related to kind of the same issue we're already flagging for council and let council deal with that. I think.
I think can, consider, consider some of the specific terms in the suggestion here. Um, so instead of having this um, focus on uh, representation, the focus changes a little bit to um, putting more and expanding access to public art within the city. Um, so it goes beyond just looking at representation, the way that uh, the recommendation is phrased. Uh, so I don't, I just don't want to lose that distinction.
Got it. Sorry. I was having trouble reading the small text of the comment there. Um.
Check.
Other thoughts from commission on that?
I'm inclined to keep the inclusive representation because I don't see where the policies, we focus on that.
Why are we concerned about not keeping it? Is if um, if there might be some future grants that are attached to that language, potential grants could be attached to that language.
I mean, good, what if it was encourage inclusive representation in, and expanded public access to something like that? So we're kind of capturing that idea in the comment without losing inclusive representation. And maybe it's in public places in this case, instead of for. Other.
This, for me, the policies don't make sense in the title of the policies. So it's just a little arch. Yeah, I guess. So policy seems so general and have nothing to do with inclusiveness, whereas it sounds like the goal here is to be inclusive. So we have to decide if it's gonna be inclusive representation and then have a policy support that or not be inclusive representation, just to be supportive and public access, then it makes more sense. But anyways, I, I'm happy that. I'm not sure if anybody else is thinking that.
I guess like, the, the way I think about it is with having that language in the, the inclusive representation there, then when you start thinking about implementation actions for seven one and seven two, you would be compelled to address that piece of it as well. Um. But, yeah.
I feel like it's a little way for us to, to be real, be wordsmithing at this point. I, I, I'm a little reticent to them.
I would also be delighted to recommend some additional policies focused on inclusive representation in art when this is transmitted to city council for them to discuss further.
Maybe we can flag for them that maybe there's a policy needed around that, an additional one. So.
Yeah.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the changes to the language involved for PT seven?
On my share.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, comment to strike historically from prioritize historically underserved neighborhoods for parks, trails and open space improvements and investments. So the goal would, or the policy would then be to prioritize underserved neighborhoods. Um, there is, there's a kind of a, a strong correlation between who's historically underserved and who's underserved now, but it's not. kind of a, a strong correlation between who's historically underserved and who's underserved now, but it's not, um, it's not a, the Venn diagram isn't a perfect circle. Um, this is language that comes directly from PSRC's multi-county planning policies. Uh, um, so we do recommend keeping it, uh, and it does very specifically address patterns of disinvestment. Um, but I, I think you could probably also get by by removing this term if you wanted to.
Could we at least add current gaps in service? Because it seems like looking at where are the current gaps in service, that should be a real factor in where we, you know, where if, if a neighborhood has historically been underserved, but isn't underserved now, and there's another neighborhood that is underserved, it seems like we should at least look at those factors.
Doesn't ten point two get that? I feel like, I mean, that kind of gets at this watershed um, concept, but it's trying to get, that's for all the city's residents. Is that? Cover that?
Yep.
I'd be inclined to leave them if it's, if we feel like it's, yeah.
Okay.
Careful.
Because actually by stating the historic underserved doesn't negate those populations that might need assistance now. I mean, that might not be historically disadvantaged, now need more access, right? That doesn't. It's, 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 it's really a contextual, uh, conversation that we're having here. So I think it's probably best to leave the language as is.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a motion or leaving it, but thank you.
Um, a recommendation to strike this policy, we're in the utilities element now, policy five point five, which is to encourage a transition from natural gas energy to electric energy for homes and businesses. This is based on some of the recent state, uh, legislation and rulemaking that, uh, is kind of a forcing a statewide transition away from natural gas. Um, it also does contribute to future work on the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, although there's no direct tie-in, um, to that element yet, uh, with this policy. Anyway, I, I think that this is really consistent with the current, uh, legislative direction, although there is, I do know there is a ballot initiative for this November. Um, that does, uh, look to overturn that, uh, HB fifteen eighty-nine.
This will be a nuanced issue for the council. I, I, I think that, uh, it, you know, what kind of natural gas, uh, stuff is still allowed? Yeah, I believe, so I think you can send this forward. But it will be, uh, a detailed and nuanced discussion for the council. It may not be unanimous. So, uh, transmit it. Uh, I do think we're, we're not of complete mixed minds, because generally it's a good thing, but a lot of people don't want to lose their grills or their fireplaces and, you know.
It's a huge.
It's a, and the, the high costs of transition uh, are huge without some kind of financial assistance, even even if you replace your furnace, the costs are high. So I'm just throwing out, the council has had some limited discussions on this. So I'm just flagging it's going to be a heavily nuanced conversation, if that's, if that's helpful.
So I propose sending this over.
Great. I second that.
Okay. So would we, if we leave it, would we pass it along with? With the comment?
I'm assuming yes.
Yeah, well, we'll transmit it with the, with the commissioner, the anonymized commissioner comment, and then the additional information uh, that, that we've provided.
Yes.
I think you could reflect that multiple commissioners had concern with this policy. I'm certainly not sure that it makes sense to include.
Because we're affordable housing.
Yeah.
Also comes into the mix, you know?
I was just thrilled to get off of the hundred and ten-year-old oil furnace that I've had.
Yes.
That retrofit from tall.
Yeah.
And I thought that was a great step up.
That's my point, that's a nuanced issue.
Alright. Thank you all. Uh, whoops. Alright, transportation element. I think this, I think this is the last element. Uh, and then there were very few comments. Most of them, uh, are for Leland to address within volume two. Um, we can cruise through those if you want, but most of them are just a need to make some updates or fill in some data gaps. Um, alright, so policy T one point two. Um, this is the policy that states, develop a park and ride facility in Lake Forest Park in coordination with planned light rail and bus rapid transit services coming to and near Lake Forest Park. Work with neighboring communities to develop additional regional upstream park and ride facilities. Commissioner Labonte very correctly noted that there was a discussion about whether this park and ride facility is actually something that people wanted or will happen. Um, as of right now, this facility is part of sound transit plan. Um, and this policy, I think, lays the groundwork for some specific coordination with ST to make sure that the facility fits more readily into Lake Forest Park. Um, I do think that we could maybe, uh, consider some language revisions that, that don't use the word develop a park and ride facility, but maybe, um, something like coordinate with light rail and BRT services in the event that a park and ride facility is funded or something like that.
That would be good. Um, it's not slated to happen until twenty forty-four. The council was ambivalent about it, though the previous administrations had strongly supported it. So, but the council, the last council and the current council have some questions. Sounds transit sued us over our garage design standards because we had things like provide capacity for solar uh, installation at a later date, provide capacity for electric vehicle charging. There were things that we did, uh, you know, uh, make some enhancements on the facade. Nothing that was like shocking to the conscience, but they hired two law firms and sued us and it cost us, I think, almost two hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. So softening the language, Christina, I think would be wonderful.
How does, how does this suggested, uh, version hit? So instead of, instead of the prior version, coordinate with planned light rail and bus rapid transit services coming to and near Lake Forest Park if a park and ride facility is funded and designed.
Sure, that sounds great to me. I, it's, wait, if this is your recommendation.
Planning Commission.
There's a lot of baggage of this one.
Alright, motion to prove that is, is revised.
Motion.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Meredith, for calling that up. Thanks for that.
Okay. Um, now looking at T one point twelve. Um, this, this is the commute trip reduction program. This is broadly recommended, um, in, I think it's, I I think this is coming from PSRC. It's there's no harm in keeping this policy, but you're absolutely right that this is not something that is going to be very applicable to any of the businesses that are currently active in Lake Forest Park. Um, there's no problem with keeping it and certainly it only helps get through the PSRC review of the transportation element, but I also think that there's, it's perfectly reasonable to strike it since there's not anyone, like there, there's no significant benefit coming from this particular policy.
I move to strike.
Um, I think we, we talked about striking it, and I think if I'm remembering right, the consensus was to, to keep it because it, it does no harm. But we all kind of acknowledge that it's not that useful.
That normally would not, especially at this point. I like having it because tomorrow, depending what happens tonight, I'm going to be sitting with PSRC and I know I'm going to be pointing at that.
That, that's what you said, yeah.
At that meeting, so like, it has no real impact to the community. But having it and getting certified by PSRC and being eligible for transportation dollars is the reason that I see happening. Um, so the balance would be keep it, but there really is.
And we could get our metro buses to directly to the U just, to the university back and we could, that would result in trip reductions. People are driving because it's much slower to take, go to light rail, uh, take the bus to light rail and then take light rail to the U District. So we have more people driving. So trip reduction might be better re- uh, restore some of the bus service that's been cut that, uh, now just goes to light rail. So I, I don't, yeah, from that point of view, there's future creative things that might be under this.
And the benefit is that it's easy to me when you say, yes, we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So we're doing it.
I guess my concern with it is like, it seems so stupid to be focused on employers. There's so few employers based here. And it really isn't their issue. It's a regional transit issue. So could we soften it to say, encourage policy, you know, encourage efforts to support commute trip reduction program strategies and practices. It emphasizes the focus on employers.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I second, I think.
So, so can you say that?
Can you restate that?
Yeah, because the reason is the person I'm sitting with, the PSRC, has a regional perspective that's never been in Lake Forest. Good. If they don't know what town center is, probably know we have Nintendo.
To accept the friendly amendment to just strike everything between encourage and commute trip reduction. So it's just encourage commute trip reduction program strategies and practices.
Yes.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now that needs a, now that needs a motion.
So move.
Amendment. Okay, second. All favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, T two point fourteen. Um, this is this is one that was, this one's maybe more wordsmithing. Um, it was a little bit awkwardly phrased. We've made some revisions. Uh, we have some alternatives here to offer. Uh, this is to promote appropriate street conditions for people walking, rolling and biking to feel safe around different levels of traffic. That's the current version. Um, the previous version said promote motor vehicle driver awareness of the need to honor the space of pedestrians, joggers and bicyclists. Which I don't, I don't know that that's less awkward. Um, so our suggestion, our alternative suggestions, if this version isn't, um, isn't hitting home, we have, uh, promote driver awareness of people walking, rolling and biking. Um, or promote driver awareness of active mode users such as pedestrian and bicy- bicyclists. Uh, that does put, put the focus back on, um, driver awareness versus, uh, street design.
Thoughts? Any of those versions landing for anyone?
I think the policy is written, it's fine. I mean.
Okay.
But I don't know if anybody else is concerned with them.
It is awkward, but I'm not concerned. I'm not concerned.
It's not the only awkward sentence.
Exactly, yeah.
Alright.
It's a conflict. It's all obvious.
Um, okay, so that brings us to the end of comments in volume one. Uh, volume two, primarily, again, these are edits to, um, make some, some updates and corrections generally to links or data, um, something of that nature. Uh, there are a couple, uh, for example, this recommendation from Commissioner Lee to add some additional text about some of the recent legislative changes. Um, specifically the Climate Commitment Act. And then other than that, some, some edits to maps that need to be made. Um, I don't know if you all want to go through this. There were very few comments overall in this, uh, volume two.
I guess that first one from Commissioner Lee, I, I tend to kind of agree with that because that feels like it would be useful somewhere to, and I don't remember if we covered it elsewhere, but to kind of just succinctly talk a little bit about kind of the legislative context that this, this update is happening in.
So that's certainly influencing a lot of
Yeah.
the decisions that were made on the policies.
So I'm not, I don't want to wordsmith it. I don't want to try to do that, but I think that would be maybe something that for you, the consultants to just add a section and we add a note to council that we haven't actually wordsmithed this, but we thought it was important to add. So.
Yeah, that, that works for me. We can, we can put something, um, uh, some, I, I would say maybe if it's focused on the Climate Commitment Act, then it, it will be fairly brief, knowing that it will be fleshed out fully during the development of the climate element. Um, but if you want kind of a broader discussion of the, uh, current legislative environment, then yes, I can add, um, a, a little bit lengthier section on that.
I mean, I guess I was thinking the climate plus the, the housing bills.
Okay.
It's going, unless it's duplicative. I can't remember if we talk about them very much elsewhere.
Um, it gets discussed in, like, in the kind of topical sections, um, either, either in volume one, uh, to a limited degree or depending on the specific topic, um, in more detail in volume two. I think that, um, like, the housing information in particular is, I think that's well discussed in, uh, Leland's attachments. Um, just because they had to develop so much stuff, uh, for all of the housing material. But there's, there are certainly areas where we didn't, like, we didn't really talk that much about the climate act, um, yet.
Yeah. Question, Lee, what do you, what do you think? Do we cover that in the, I mean, would you like to see the climate one called out here? Is that?
Not necessarily. I think, I think the, the spirit of what I was trying to say is to improve, just in this introduction, uh, some of the state how, I mean, what people are seeing is not, is really, uh, largely into the state, uh, legislation that we have this part. So not necessarily, that's just.
Well, maybe we leave it as it is because we know we're going to go deeper into the climate stuff in the coming year.
There is also, I think, a climate element amended to this.
At some point next year, you'll have a scandal of climate element.
Yeah.
Throw that out.
Yeah, so we can tackle it then and hopefully we still have. We'll see, see if it. Or, I'm sorry, I personally hope we get a season of the market speed for it. It's supposed to have the funding given the timetable.
Okay, so it sounds like it would be worthwhile to per- to prepare a brief kind of broad discussion of the legislative context and then leave off more specific discussion of the climate uh, legislation for the climate element. That, did I get that right?
Sounds good.
Great, yes. Okay.
Not going through all the volume two stuff, which, which a lot of it was kind of cleanups and things, or does somebody know they had something that they really wanted to see addressed?
I, I just wanted to make a comment. I know there's been going through the document, uh, the references were to very outdated data sets, and I just wasn't sure if that would be. Uh, there was a lot of, in the parks, for example, uh, I forget the document that kept getting referred to, but that was done in twenty ten. There was no mention of the, the tree canopy, but it seems like if it's updated, it should reflect, you know, current data reports that has come out. Just.
Um, I, I did capture, I did capture quite a few of those and I will, I will come through this again, uh, to make sure that we've got the current versions. Not all of that, um, Not all of that, not all of the, the data sets have been updated. Some of them are just old, but I will make sure that we capture the most current version.
Yeah, some of those caught my eye too. I pointed a bunch of those out.
That's just my global comment on the South section.
Which you've mentioned before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That a dating verse? What are you trying to say?
No, it's a good thing. It's a reminder.
I'd like you to speak on it, I can.
Okay, so it sounds like beyond that, nobody wants to go through the comments on volume two and maybe we can proceed to our recommendation.
Yeah, before we just brief it, before we do that, as well, Chair of all of this evening, I just want to express my appreciation to how hard we worked on this. And some of you were, you know, working on the commission long before I was, but this last year of, of work on the cop plan has been a lot. Lots of meetings, lots of effort, lots of good discussions. So just thank you all. I think we can feel good about we're transmitting, so.
And of course, thank you from the council. All of you. We are aware of how tense this was, how challenging with the legislation. We are had a little bracing ourselves, we're bracing ourselves for having to do something simpler in less time. But thank you so much for your part.
So we entertain a motion, I think, to transmit our recommendations to the council along with the, well, we're going to talk about transmittable letter next. Right, yeah, we're going to talk about that still. So a motion to transmit the comprehensive plan draft as amended to council as our official recommendation.
So moved. I moved to do just that.
Second. Go ahead. Let's do it all together in a second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Just, just want to check, Melissa, can, can you?
Hear me? I don't know. I know my camera's not working. I'm sorry, but I agree.
The unanimous?
Yep.
I don't think Melissa's been on that.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next item here then is the transmittal cover letter, which is also on the packet.
Right after the draft is.
Yeah.
I thought it was. So thank you to whoever worked on it.
There were several authors here and we tried to capture some of the feedback that we discussed as a group. And then a few of us did most of the drafting. Like to just ask if anyone has anything they'd like to comment on, or is it looking good?
I, I think it looks good. Based on what was already done, right? But we've had some conversations this evening. I'm wondering if there's anything else that we should add to this based on our conversation tonight? And I just can't remember what the one thing that, it was just a few minutes ago. That we're going to send something over to the council for this. Not the equity, but something else. Wasn't the natural gas, no.
I didn't think that there was anything new tonight that rose to the level of highlighting as a significant theme. The way we tried to write the letters here, the key themes and the one area of, you know, lack of unanimity in that last molded paragraph. So I, I don't see a substantive need to add anything, but if there are, if there is something we're missing, this is the time.
I really like.
I'm just reading it, yeah.
Okay. Did we just need a motion for this letter as our council? Okay, let's get a motion.
We dropped the letters to the council yesterday.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay, we have a transmittal letter.
I'll go to the council of the packet for September 26th.
Perfect. And last in our own business is middle housing development regulations with SCJ Elias.
Yes, so there's, there's been kind of a fairly last minute development that Leland pointed out to Mark and I a couple of months ago. So the Department of Commerce has asked for some additional analysis from all jurisdictions, not just for Lake Forest Park, but for, for everybody on the step housing. So that's the, the permanent supportive, supportive emergency bed portion of the housing allocations. They have asked for a land capacity analysis specifically focused on that and a kind of a barriers assessment also specifically focused on that topic in a little bit greater detail than was done for the rest of the, the housing units. They published some, what I'll call late stage guidance and some material that, that they made available just earlier this summer and asked all of the jurisdictions to do their analysis and incorporate it into their comp plan. Leland has now completed that work and has identified some barriers within the Lake Forest Park Policy and Code environment and the charge will be to work on those barriers over the next about five years between the adoption of the plan and when the progress report is submitted. So we just got these materials. I think it was yesterday. Mark and I have not had a chance to really go through them, but I just wanted to let you know that we've got some additional material that we will be looking at as we are beginning the rest of our housing, middle housing code work.
The council recently updated our regulations in this area and looked at the properties throughout the city. So I'd be interested, Christina, in seeing that report because we had a multiple series of meetings where we talked about this. And, you know, made changes consistent with the previous state law, which came down with just the legislative session just before this one. So to the extent there are barriers identified, I think if you could share with John and me that, that report, that would be helpful. Just because we've worked on this fairly recently and have detailed discussions on.
Yeah, nothing like a last minute checklist and guidebook to throw over monkey engine things, right?
Yeah.
But yes, we can absolutely get those things sent over to the two of you. Or the, the entire council when the time comes.
Just, I had not heard of this and just because we, I think we worked on it in the last year, so.
So were we also going to just hear a little bit about what, what the plan looks like for us to work more on middle housing? Was that part of tonight? Or I mean, I know we're out of, we're almost out of time, so I was trying to.
Exactly. What can we do today? The, the undone was how many comments remain and to go through and we've just done that. There was a scenario where if that only took half the meeting, what are we going to do with the other half? And so the, the, the easiest way was to add this agenda in case we had that opportunity. Because we know that's the next task. And it's not policy, it's development regulation. So it's a clean break, but it's essentially starts right now.
So maybe we save that for a future agenda topic while you digest it.
In other words, thank you for your great work. Now we're on beat. But not tonight.
Not tonight. So then. Let me play this back to you. So at next meeting, we have a bunch of, on the new business side, we're going to discuss these various items of interest that we want to tee up for our future work. I assume we'll have some discussion about how to prioritize them, which ones we could do first, which ones do we just want to get to at some point. I assume we can, we can talk all that and do that as part of our meeting in October.
Yes.
Yes. And then we'll start on that middle housing.
And that's the, that's the plan. Being that by June of next year, if those development regulations are acted upon, July 1st, we're subject to model ordinance. So that's the first. For the, for the next meeting, when we come together, I don't know if we have this already, but Mark and Deputy Mayor Bodie, would we be able to have a steer from the council on other particular topics on this list that would be most helpful for us to tackle first? It might just be good to kind of inform kind of where we go next.
Right.
And not to put you on the spot.
No, I don't, I don't know, but that's a good conversation to, it's good to ask us. You know, because I think we're just striking from the fire hose like you were initially too, you know, so. So, so posing that specific question to us would be, would be good. I think many council members have no clue what's coming to them. For the analyses that have been done, though Mark has been briefing everybody. Every, everyone has said, oh yeah, good, it's coming, I would know. So, so I think that that request would be good to, to come to us and as and with putting on my deputy mayor hat, I'll try to facilitate some of that conversation. And see, I know there are topics that have been percolating through council meetings that will be of interest. Certainly all the house will be. Sidewalks, trails, walkways, traffic calming, very actively in discussion. Parks and where we're going, parks, active topics of discussion, climate action. So there are a number of places, you know, that where there's, there's been interest, but I do think asking for that specific direction is very good. So. I want to commend you guys also because a lot of communities, even at the comprehensive plan level have been, have a huge community meetings and a lot of controversy. And, you know, I think that your public outreach and stuff like that has, and the fact that your community ambassadors has been very helpful and, and so far we have not had that. Now, when we get down to regulations, you never could tell. But, you know, that's, that may be where the rubber hits the road, but I think, and Christina, same for you and your team. I just want to say, we have been amazingly lucky and and, and part of it is we have the capacity for growth. So we don't, we aren't going out searching for the capacity for growth, which some communities are doing, right? So, but a lot of it is your hard work and engagement with the community and representing the community here. So I just want to say it's appreciated because as council, as a council, we haven't had much incoming. So. And same for Mark.
No J to that.
So can we briefly just touch on, and I know we're over time, but the planning commission vacancies?
That's easy. The city clerk is advertising. Melissa has indicated that this winter her family's relocating. And so the tree board and the variety of other volunteer committees are advertised, but the primary is planning commission. Advertising is taken place.
Good. And Melissa, how many, when do you think your last meeting will, will be? You said a few months perhaps?
Yeah, I mean, so I am, we're not actually moving until next year. I was, so I can stay on for a few months. I just figured, you know, maybe wrapping up by the end of the year, but, but I can be here longer if you need. Yeah.
Well, thank you. We, we'd love to keep you and, and we also want to know when to wish you well on your next chapter. So keep us posted.
Will do.
Okay, no citizen comments that I'm seeing. Agenda for next meeting, well, we're going to start with finishing the agenda from this meeting. And that'll be Tuesday, October 8th for our next one. Motion to adjourn for anyone? Some move? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Christina.
Congratulations. Thank you. Bye bye. Have a good night.